Five fifteen, we shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, welcome to everybody in the audience and especially a welcome to Becca. Turn your fearless leader. Great to have you on board and ready to roll. We will start out with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. And this one happens to be by John C. Maxwell. If you think you're leading and you turn around and see no one following you, then you're just taking a walk. I think there might be a message there for us somewhere. That being said, we shall move on to the approval of the agenda. Anything that anybody would like to add?
Roll.
If not, oh.
We should do roll. You want to do a roll call?
We did roll call, didn't we?
No.
No.
Oh, sorry, I skipped right by it. I thought we did roll call already. We better have roll call vote. I'm sorry, thank you guys.
Look behind.
Got ahead of myself.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Galloson?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Very good, thank you. Now, we can move on to the agenda. We just need a motion to approve or?
I'll move approval of the agenda as stated.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. Okay, citizens' comments. At this time, it looks like we have a representative here, Celeste from West Central Initiative, and she's going to give us a little presentation. Yeah, right up to the mic there.
All right, I'll start things off, and then I will also open the floor to either Pat or even Greta if you want to weigh in. And Pat is on our EDD board, and she can also just comment on any work or ideas and that sort of thing. But thank you for having me today. I have a trivia question to start off with, which I feel like you all will know. So we are two types of organizations, West Central Initiative. What two types are we? What are we? I have a prize here. What are we?
Well, it should be economic development and also loan servicing or?
Yeah. So we are the regional development organization. Oh, no, I'm gonna have to like rip the book in half. What if someone else figures out the other part? So we are, we are the regional development organization for Minnesota's District Four. We have nine counties. We have the same footprint for our other kind of hat we wear. What else do we do?
Sustainability?
Yeah, sustain- sustainability, climate action, which you all are great leaders in. Think about our grants. We give grants, right? Which like regional development organizations don't typically do. They're more on like the loan side of things. They help communities access state and federal grants typically. Okay, so like we give grant, we raise money and then redistribute. So we are also a foundation. We're a community foundation. So I think, Brian, Councilman Brian, you get this book here because you won the first part. So we, we are a community foundation that serves the District Four of Minnesota, one of the Minnesota Initiative foundations. We raise money and distribute it. We have our discretionary grant fund, a couple of recipients in the area. For this year, one would be Conexiones. And that's, okay, off the top of my head, I cannot remember the other. But so that's one arm and one set of things. On the regional development side, we do all of our loans. And there's a great flyer in, I see it right there. Can you hold that up, Jeff? The loan program one? The other one, the light, the, yes, it's confusing because they are both blue. But if we say the aqua colored one, that is exactly what we had been talking about, all of our loan programs. And we typically have referrals that come from banks that maybe the banks can't, with their very strict guidelines, they cannot fund. But we have a little bit more flexibility given our mission, right, in terms of business and economic development for the region. And as we kind of talk about all the hats that West Central wears, we also have early childhood education, transportation under our, under our umbrella. When we look at what is new for the region this year specifically, the other kind of dark blue handout, we are really leaning it, thank, oh, thank you. I should have another prize, right?
I'll make him read it, and then he'll have to explain it to us all by the next meeting.
I love it. Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. One thing that's kind of new on the docket is the leadership program, the public leadership. So it's rural democracy program. Right now, we're going to start this program with the weekend trainings that will be the last weekend of September or the first weekend of October. And these are folks that maybe want to run for office or retain the knowledge or be the vehicle that holds the knowledge of how to run for office, the campaign managers of the world, the grandparents of the world that can hold this knowledge, all that good stuff. But overall, with the rural democracy project, it comes from the fact that in our rural areas, we need just a lot more people in their lifetime to be in elected office, thank you all, by the way, than urban areas, right? On average, the state of Minnesota, one in 21 Minnesotans need to be in office or serve on a nonprofit board. But in some of our counties, it's as high as one in eight people need to do this, one in nine, right? So there's just a leadership demand that is unique to our area and is, and is unique to rural areas. So if you know anyone who would be a good fit for that, the application deadline is the, is August 18th. We will also have a six-month program for maybe folks who work in nonprofit or just want to do a larger community project related to civic leadership. And then it's not like we're trying to unseat you all, so there's something called Lead Local, right? We're not trying to get rid of you. So if you're looking for peers in other cities, I'm not sure Mayor Waller's, if you've met with Ben Shire, he's leading the Lead Local, maybe you have contacted him or he's contacted you.
We haven't been able to get together yet, but yeah, we're planning to.
Oh, great, yeah. So he's trying to reinvigorate a mayor's network that used to exist pre-COVID. Just to, you know, there are things out there like the League of Minnesota Cities and statewide networks, and this would be just more regional. If they're similar, like if we talk about how did you do your sewer and water? Or like, oh, like flooding, I don't know, like how do we go about that? Do you have any tips and tricks? I don't know if there are tips and tricks when we talk about flooding. But just that peer resource knowledge exchange that's more regional rather than statewide or even national sometimes. That's kind of new on our docket for this year. Let's see, what else? Any, I'm gonna pause for questions. Any questions, West Central related? I really want to do a strong, kind of like moment of gratitude for you all because I, one of our focuses is climate. And then I truly think you're a leader in terms of the city of Morris and your partnership with the university. We have other cities that ask about you. Our dream is to facilitate like a field trip to Morris in that way, right? Because we do have other cities that are like, how did they do that? Like, that's really cool, wow. And I know that I've worked with Griffin quite a bit, and he's been great in terms of the reporting, questions with grants and so on and so forth. So we, we've enjoyed that and have had a great experience. We've had, this book comes from our Convivium. Did any of you, I think Mayor Waller's, you maybe were at Convivium? Is that where I saw you? No, okay. It was at the university, and we had Dr. Heidi Rube come and talk about. Yeah, that's because I think that's where I saw you last, before the, yep.
Yeah, I was there.
And it kind of just talked about, okay, this is an incredibly, incredible challenge, right? Like, we know with the last few days, for example, like I haven't been outside because of the air quality and like the world is kind of on fire at the moment, like what do we do, like with this uncertainty? So Rube, in this book, Dr. Rube provides a lot of examples and kind of a step-by-step, like what can we all do together? Yeah, so I, that's another reason why I was excited to come today, because I think you all are great leaders in that respect. Other questions related to West Central?
For your rural democracy stuff, do you, do you advertise that out so that people in the community know about it? That maybe would like to go?
We are doing, we are doing advertising through this. So we've been going to all councils and including that. We've been going to service clubs, and then also we'll do a big social media push because our application just went live. But if, if you have any suggestions or groups that you're connected with that you'd like us to go and speak with, we'd be happy to do that too.
I just didn't know if you were like, you know.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Whatever you're advertising out to.
Actively advertising, yeah.
To people that, you know, I mean, you're kind of talking to the choir, you're talking to us because we're already doing it. So I was just wondering if it was out to people that, you know, were maybe, hey, that looks kind of neat, I'll go take that and maybe I would like to do something, but I'd like to have a little information about it. I think it's a great project, really.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Where our social media rolls out beginning of next week. And that's kind of what we, when we think of meet, like targeted outreach, that's kind of our general slew. And maybe we'll get folks that aren't otherwise connected with West Central.
Have you thought about like putting a link on cities and county webpages? Information about this, because that might be where people might look for what's going on or, you know, the social media is great, but also specific spots where they could link to.
Okay. That would be great, right? And if you all want to discuss if that'd be appropriate for your city website, we'd be happy to. We do have the information nested under our website. We have a rural democracy page that's, I can send and share with you all. So we, everything that you see here is accessible online with the application.
And just so you know, they're currently facilitating that Main Street development money that we've received, that 1.2 million, I believe it is. So Greg and his staff is helping, working with SEIC, of course, and helping facilitate that whole process.
Absolutely, yes. I won't say a lot about that because admittedly, I, I don't do a lot with Main Street, but I know Greg has been hard at work.
Yes, he has.
Yes, he's been really hard at work and another great opportunity. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, yeah.
Celeste?
Yes.
How often do you make city visits, like what you were doing this evening?
So last year, we visited all 82 cities. Well, not all, because there are a couple whose schedules just didn't work out. And then this year, we put out a call and were able to go to whomever would like us to come back. So we've had quite a few. I know that some of my coworkers have been to 20 cities already. I certainly have only been to a handful this year, just because I've been doing a lot with the rural belonging and rural democracy. Would you, Commissioner Pat, would you like to weigh in on anything else?
That was one of the questions I had, because you were in Chicago like a couple of weeks ago. Did you address the city council there as well?
I think it might have been my colleague Sam, but I've been to recently, I was in Lake Park. And then, you're right, I think I was in Chicago. I've had to remember, I'm like, wait, this year or last year? Yeah, and it's one of my favorite parts, because when you have 82 cities, when do you get to go to all the 82 cities, right? And we usually like to do a little tour and check in, maybe stop at a few businesses.
Yeah, very good, because the West Central Initiative, I would say, M D T are, that is one of the committees that I've been assigned to as a commissioner. That's one of the 18 committees that I, that I am working with. And so I'm very interested in learning as much as I can about what West Central Initiative does. So, great, thank you. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your interest.
I have a question for you all, which is, what, when you think of maybe the challenges that your city faces or something that you're trying to problem solve, what keeps you up at night? What are the top three things on your mind?
Keeping our Main Street vibrant. I mean, that's one of the constant challenges. You have empty buildings or buildings that are getting in tough shape to keep them, that are, to be occupied by a business that wants to come into town.
Okay, so just my, Main Street, keeping it lively and kind of up to date, and, okay, thank you.
Driving through some of the towns, yeah, and you see a third of the buildings are vacant, yeah, it's, it's very depressing in a lot of the communities, the smaller ones, and hopefully we can stay ahead of that curve.
Absolutely. No, and for context, I like to bring this back and write in the notes, right? Because that also informs what we're working on. We like to pride ourselves of being responsive, so if we're hearing, yes, okay, we're on track. Or hey, this is a concern that many of the cities have shown or told us about, and maybe we need to find stronger programming for that. So thank you for your feedback. Others?
Housing.
Yes.
Housing, how do you revitalize the inner city? How do you, how do you take housing that's, you know, 50-foot lots that are 70, 80 years old? You know, how, how do you take that and revitalize it? I mean, there's obviously, you know, so, because it just, what bigger cities do, they, they crumble inside and they grow on the outside. And so you have this here too, and then we don't have a lot of housing. So it's always been a thought of mine is how, how does the city revitalize the housing in its city when it gets old? You know, I mean, it's, you know, does, does the city help to the, the people that own it? Is there initiatives from places like yours that would help to revitalize it? You know, or combine a lot to build a new home? You know, things like that. I think that's one thing that is hard on these cities now that are getting this age is that you just have so many aging properties.
Thank you for elaborating on that, because sometimes I hear housing, it's like, okay, yes, put housing back on the list. But have, to have this specific kind of aspect of housing, that's helpful to take back. Thank you. One more thing.
Affordable healthcare or affordable daycare?
Affordable daycare.
You know, we, Tony has taken an initiative and, you know, recently built the daycare pods. And if you haven't gone by there lately, it's looking really nice, but they're already full. So, you know, that is, you can bring all the businesses you want to town, but you got to have, you know, be able to provide daycare opportunities for families.
That's good to keep that, and that's, that will be my three, unless you want to add a four. Housing, Main Street, and childcare. And there's, it's been kind of this new blast of data coming out where like the tagline is women want to come back to the workforce but can't post-COVID because of childcare, right? And how it's kind of damaging all around in that way. So thank you for your feedback, yeah. One more plug I'd just like to say is it's been great having Greta working with us for the summer. She grew up in Morris, and so it's nice to have her on staff for a bit, and so, yeah, that was a fun connection, so. If you don't have other questions for us, we'll probably get out of your care, but thank you for having us, and please stay in touch. There is a contact on every one of those forms. But when in doubt, you're, please contact me or go to our website. We're all happy to answer your questions or further connect you to the right person.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we shall move on. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We will move on to reading and approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 11th meeting.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from July 11th meeting.
I will second.
Motion in a second to approve the July 11th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. And then we have the condensed version of the minutes from July 11th.
I'll move approval of the condensed version.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the condensed version of the January 11th, or Ju- January, July 11th meetings. We don't want to go there yet. July 11th meeting, condensed meeting minutes, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. We shall move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the gambling reports, transit report, and the expenditure and revenue report. And I'll just be looking for a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda, and we can have some discussion on any of those items. Now would be a good time.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion in a second on the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion, any questions that anybody on the council may have? Hearing none. We will have, or I guess, all those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. We have no petitions, requests, and communications. We shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first resolution we have is a resolution to enter into agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit service. And then I will entertain a motion to approve that resolution, and then we can have a discussion.
Is this just with respect to our grant application for the transit?
Yeah, so it's for our, for the operating for 2024 for transit. It's due by the end of the month to admit that.
Gotcha.
And this is the first time since before COVID that we have to have a local share of 5%. But as you can see in the medal, 5% is roughly 30,000, so our estimated fare revenue will cover that, resulting in $0 in city share that should happen.
Were we, were we before COVID, did we have a share?
Yeah.
And then through COVID, we didn't?
Right.
Nice.
Is that actual COVID funding through the state, is it 100% covered?
So we're back to normal?
Yep.
Does that rate change, the 5%?
Yeah, it can fluctuate, and they're talking about maybe even having to raise it as the years go by. For 2024 at that time.
We're still waiting for delivery on buses yet from years gone by, like about three of them?
Three buses.
Right. Okay, but this is just the paperwork?
Strictly operating.
Okay.
So buses are considered capital purchases.
Owned by the city. Thank you. I'll move on the resolution to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit service.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolutions entering into an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit service. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll have a roll call vote. No further discussion? Roll call vote on that resolution, please, Ashley.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Galloson?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next up is a resolution approving a Click Content studio marketing proposal for 2023. And I'll just look in for a motion to approve, and then we can have a discussion.
I will move a motion to proceed with a resolution approving a Click Content studio marketing proposal for 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve that resolu- or to approve that resolution. And I'll just open it up for discussion. Any questions, comments?
Are you, are you on this board?
Kim actually took my spot.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I was on it.
I just want to say that the amount was never known to the, the tourism board. They approved the additional marketing, but the amount they didn't know about. So I don't know where the amount came from. The couple of board members I talked to didn't really have that. So if that makes a difference or not, I don't know. They just approved additional marketing. And then this was the amount that was brought. So I'm not sure where.
It's from past resolutions and things that have been done.
The amount or that approval?
The amount.
Yeah, okay.
So how is our new system working for the submission of stuff to be included on our advertising?
I believe that's working well. Ashley monitors that, right? You're the one that, and so, yeah.
I mean, we had issues of what was included, what could be included. And earlier, we decided we had a, an application basically to get your festivities listed on there, and I haven't heard nothing, so I assume it's going good, so.
Yeah, I think if there's anything that's needed, there, somebody from the board reaches out and says, hey.
That's what we should be doing, is to try to help. If it's something that's promoting activities in our town and drawing people to, and that's what the funds should be used for.
We are looking at switching the days we meet, and I know Ashley was looking for that, but you haven't figured it out, so that the Chamber Director, Sarah, can be involved as well. Yeah, which she can't right now, and it seems kind of like we meet right when everybody starts getting to work, so it's not really a great time, but.
Well, sometimes we have to alter our schedule.
And everybody seems agreeable to do it.
To make it work for everybody, or the most.
Yep, just trying to good find.
Always a conflict to try, but like you say, try something different, see if it works for more people.
It seems to me that that fee, $28,350, seems about where that's been in the past. I just can't remember the exact dollar.
It's probably, yeah, I don't know.
It seems that's about where we've been, but then.
I just felt that it made it look like that the tourism board approved that specific amount at, at a meeting recently, and that was.
Oh, I see.
That's, that it might have been a past thing that they approved, and that's what Click Content charges for what those services that were, that were agreed upon.
If you look at a lot of the things that they do, it's, they do a lot of things for us. And I think that partnership has worked out real well over the years, having sat on the tourism board myself. We, we always struggle, we always struggle finding a marketing company that we really had some success with. But I think the relationship with Click has gone very well, my personal take on it.
I can interject too. It says, "Proposal for 2023," but if you look, it's summer and fall of 2023. And typically for the city of Morris, the, it's heavy summer and fall events. So winters almost just are basic tourism advertising. So it looks like it's a lot of money, but the majority of our big events are summer and fall. So just keep that in mind too, if it looks like a lot of money.
You know, you, you talk to people like now we're, I'm involved in the Prairie Harvest Fest. Beck and I sat in on the meeting the other day, and, you know, you get feedback from the local businesses and local groups that are organizing events. And they really have spoken loudly and in appreciation of what we've done with the marketing dollars. We seen it last year at Prairie Harvest Fest, at, I mean overwhelmingly, probably the best attendance we've had. So the marketing effort is working. It's getting people here, and so that tells me that I think this is money well spent. Any further discussion? We can, I'll just entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Did we have one?
We already.
We were just in discussion.
Do we already have the motion in a second?
In a second.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we would.
Yeah, we were just discussing.
Just make sure. Okay, we got that covered. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilman Solby?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Galloson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, last but not least, we have the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, do you just want me to kind of go through it?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay, so been a, been a busy first week, getting to know staff, been to tourism board meeting, entry board meeting, out at Heartland for the Prairie, Prairie?
Harvest Fest.
Harvest Fest, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so met with the county commissioners and the county staff today about some body cam stuff that we'll talk about in a couple of weeks. And, yeah, so a lot of, a lot of different meetings with people, went, took a tour of the city and the water plant, and, yeah, it's been a busy first week, so, very good. Had a webinar today on cannabis, adult. Had a webinar today on um cannabis, adult um cannabis that is coming into play August first. Um the county, when we met with them today, they're looking to have a meeting sometime in August with all entities in the county, just to kind of go over what what this all means and how we're gonna move forward with it, so that'll be something to come down the pike, um, working on the budget. Um gave the uh department heads their their budgets to look over, and um then have a meeting uh with me once they they do that, so we can kind of start working on the budget. Um and then the next meeting, just in FYI, I'll be, I'll be out, so just so you're all aware, I can give you all my um phone numbers, so if you need to get ahold of me while I'm gone, I will be um, will be available by phone, so don't hesitate to to give me a call or a text.
Anything for the city manager?
Just to add in on that, at the meeting we had with the county this morning, that they have made an offer for the county attorney, so just waiting to hear on that, but normally what we end up with a county attorney seems to be a a nice fit for us for the city attorney, so they have made an offer to somebody and expecting a a reply back from that individual shortly.
Yeah, Carl, I think it was named, it sounds like he's a very qualified.
And then with the county also saying that we'll need to update our ordinances, like with the tobacco, with the marijuana, just in all our facilities or parks, all of that, but that's for us to learn and going forward when we meet with them, so, yeah, a very good informational meeting with them this morning, and they'll hash over some stuff that we discussed and bring it to the full council ideally here like in a month.
Did we decide who was gonna sit in on that, was it you and Jeff?
Jeff and I, no, Brian and I, since we've met with law enforcement on previous.
And they haven't set a date yet, really haven't?
We met this morning.
Oh, you did, good, good. All right.
Had a good meeting, yeah, and Rebecca and Whitney.
Okay.
The four of us, and Sheriff Dingman and Chief Deputy Reed and.
All right.
Ballers Staples and Rebecca from up there, so.
Hmm.
Good deal.
I wonder if we could, you know, I know we have a work session for our budget, is it possible that we have one before we adopt the preliminary budget? You know, a lot of times we do, we've done that work session, it's almost like it's, it's at the end, and I don't even know why we actually had it, because it's already like approved, I I I think it'd be nice if, once you meet with your department heads and you guys are working on a preliminary, it'd be nice to have a work session to see that.
Well, we have a, the fourth Tuesday in August is our probably our next opportunity, right?
Right.
Of our scheduled one.
Scheduled one, yeah.
Well, we can do a a special meeting whenever we want, we just have to call it and do it, but I think that'd be awesome to do that, and especially with the new city manager, and just to review some of our our budget things earlier in the process, to get more involvement for us, just to take part on that also.
It's a good idea.
I'm gonna have a backtrack to the que- question, when you were talking about the ordinances and for the new medical marijuana, or the non-medical marijuana usage. When you, do you have to establish if you're a smoke-free built- building, isn't it just smoke-free, or do you have to, did you get into that, like, do you know, do you have to I like state what kind of smoke it is, if it's.
So I think the buildings, it's it follows the Clean Air Act, um but like parks and things, those, even though they're public places, um you, from what I've been reading, you have to specify that.
Okay.
That they can't smoke.
Agree, but I think it's also in the buildings, just it has to be specified, tobacco and marijuana, it it needs a separate identification from the stuff I've read and looked at.
I think smoke would be so.
But it was funny, when we were in Amsterdam, though, you could smoke weed in the coffee shop, but you had to go outside to smoke a cigarette.
Well, one might be natural and one might be.
I mean, just had. But we have, we discussed, discussed different things with the county also on one per twelve thousand with the county, and curious if we were going to, and they we're looking into other things there on the marijuana too, on the possibility of if the city wants to get into that, and there was some discussion back and forth with the law enforcement and the commissioners and us, but, yeah, it's a lot of things we have to look at.
It's a big deal everywhere, because I was just hearing something on the news today about, yeah, you can post, I don't know, like.
Over clarification's not a bad thing, though.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But legally, I think the first of August now, we can start growing and have up to eight plants, and you cannot sell it, or it'll be like twenty-five, twenty twenty-five before they have all the the process and order where they'll actually be able to start selling legally. So it's a ways before it's coming, but just if the city is interested, and what the the one per twelve thousand is sort of the guideline, but.
Would you be one for twelve?
One license.
Oh, for twelve thousand people?
That would be the minimum.
Great, okay, what?
But we questioned some back and forth with them also on each city if we're able to, and questioning if a smaller city wanted five, could they, so just a lot of legwork, and I don't know if the state knows themselves on a lot of this, but.
Don't they have to form a department?
Yes, that's, that's a lot of the process, so, just be nice for us to sit down and meet with the county and the different cities in our county and just get information for everybody.
I don't, I really don't think that the public knows the stress that's gonna put on your law enforcement and the extra, the extra work that they have to do to regulate, but it's gonna, you know, it's like piling more bookwork on them than you've already got, buddy. Uh I had another question, uh how, maybe Whitney, you try to, how are we doing out at the park? Are we, uh, everything going good out there, are we getting our collections done reasonable?
Yep, I mean, as far as people camping?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's going really well, it's been really busy, we did Ashley and Jeremiah had to work together on getting um, putting uh, what would you call it, uh a board where people put their paid receipts so it's visible for when the guys do rounds.
Oh, no.
Every day out in the country, or on the weekends out there, um, you know, there's, they've had some troubles with electricity, but as long as people let us know, then we know. Just like some sites don't work, but, Ashley, would you say it's going well?
Yeah.
Always make sure it's stopped with the tickets.
Tickets and if the city guys can't, don't have time to go up and get them, then.
Do we have some sites out there that are, that the electricity isn't working well for them or having issues with it?
One set, yep.
Do we have?
And there's a cord on it and stuff, so.
Do we, we have somebody set up to look at it, or, I know electricians are a little tough to know.
It's already been fixed.
Oh, well, that's awesome.
It might have gone again. They're gonna have to look at it some more.
I know I talked to Jeremiah one day when I had swung into City Hall, and he had a whole packet of the the camping fees, and said there was an issue with somebody that had been camping I think for quite a while out there without paying nothing, but they pretty much just left all of their stuff in a pile, so he contacted the sheriff's department before he went through it, but said he found some other things in the materials on the ground that shouldn't have been there, so was glad that he had contacted sheriff's department, but all in all, he said either Russ or himself or somebody from City Hall has been routinely going out and checking, so it sounds like it's going very well, and we're collecting the fees, so hopefully we can afford to make some more improvements out there.
Pick a ball courts, Whitney, the last time I was there, I haven't, are they?
Yeah, so um at our staff meeting today, um Russ said that they are, this week, they should be um finishing the fences and acid washing, and our next big thing is to pick colors.
Okay, getting closer.
Yeah.
Russ has been staying on them, he's calling them when they are not showing up to make sure that they finish the job, so he's staying on it to get it finished.
I figured as much. Good deal. Crazy Days in Morris tomorrow, everybody knows, a lot of food, a lot of fun.
Dunk stand here, huh?
Pardon?
You're on the dunk stand?
Uh, no. No. Uh, we do have some entertainment at the park, not Mayor Waller's in a dunk stand, it'll be a blue-red roses entertainment, starting at five, I think they run until eight. It's gonna be very hot, but.
Start early.
Fun day.
Seven.
Yeah, so get out and support Crazy Days tomorrow, it's a fun day, but Chambers put a lot of effort into that, a lot of fun activities going on. Anything else to come before the council? Hearing none?